To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's do the roll call. Larry, you want to call it roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
Mrs. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Heilmann.
Here.
Mr. Holmes is not here, is he?
I have no idea.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Connel.
Here.
And Mr. Leavitt.
Here.
All right, let's start with the KCBA building update. Yep, right there.
You kind of have to stand here because the camera is trained.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Kelly with KCBA Architects. With me tonight is Jamie Ober from our office, as well as Jim Bannon, who is the civil engineer from Nave Newell. We wanted to start tonight by thanking you guys again for trusting us on this project. We've been working with the team here for several weeks now. We're pretty excited to give you a basic update of the project, of the building, and some of the improvements that we're looking to do on the site. Up there.
There he is.
We'll go back. I wanted to show you, this was the model that we had presented to you guys back when we were interviewing. This is the existing... This is the existing model that we have of the site. There's Manoa Road down here, the existing police station in the scadium. You can see the fields in this general area. The general layout for the site remains very similar to how we had proposed it back in the interview phase. We looked at parking. Parking is obviously a very critical part to this project, and we said we felt the best way to create the most efficient parking area is to make it rectilinear. Right now, you know, you've got the islands in the middle. Some are going this way, some are going that way. And we said, all right, well, the best way to get the increased amount of parking that's desired on the site is to basically create a parking lot that's four sides. What that leaves is the municipal area down here in this triangle area. That would be for the building as well as police services. And that concept works really well when you think about the topography on the site as well. Basically, the slope of the site really steps down right in that general area. So the placement of the building and the organization of the site really seems to make sense in this general layout. What you're seeing here is the existing plan. This is an existing site plan. So here's the parking here. And again, it kind of shows what I was talking about. We've got this, is that an angle? That's at another angle. That's at an angle. An island in the middle. So we really felt that that was an opportunity to clean that up and increase the amount of parking that we were looking for on the site.
One question or a quote while we're on that. That veterans' area, is that being moved on that?
That is being relocated. This area here, we proposed to move, not only that, that's the existing gas pump. So the gas pump will be moved, and the memorial will be moved. It wasn't... That's a separate conversation with another group that we'll be talking to, but we did provide a proposal to have something out in front of the scadium. We've talked about relocating that to other areas on the property. It's a very important aspect to the site. We felt, if anything, right now, having it here really wasn't given its due anyways. Basically, on a parking island. So we felt this would be a great opportunity. One, to be honest, it's in the way of creating a much more efficient parking layout. But two, let's make something a little bit more appropriate for memorial, and that's another design piece that we'll certainly get into.
But who are you going to get into that with?
There will be a committee involved to do that. Right now, we're working with a...
I'm sorry?
Chris will be heading that committee.
Okay, so we're going to have a committee. Chris, you're going to head that up?
It's going to be a committee that is going to look into and work with this group to...
Jeff brings up a good point. I mean, we should have say into, I think, where we're going to...
Because I want to make sure there's ample space when we have the...
Yeah, and as James said, rededicate the...
Yeah, it's an opportunity to rededicate. It would be nice, actually.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Well, rededicate, but you want to make sure there's enough room for the band, and enough room for everybody come and pay respects, and we have our memorials and all. So, that's all.
I mean, I just don't want it to be an afterthought. I'm not saying it's going to be, but at the scadium area, I don't know. I mean, just...
Chris, long ago, months ago, Chris has asked...
He brought it up. He did.
Yeah, he brought it up to change it.
It was discussed in all the property meetings as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, yeah. And I'm just saying...
Thank you, Bill.
It's a good point, and it absolutely will be taken with the same focus and seriousness as we're doing with the building.
I know you would.
The first thing we had, the poems, was can it be removed and relocated? Here's a concept of where it may go. Everybody said, okay, it might not be the right spot. It might not be the right concept just yet, but yes, we all agree that the idea of moving it from where it is works for, again, creating a better parking layout and creating an area that may be a little bit more appropriate for...
So I know the question about parking. Could you go back to the new parking? So that, I remember you discussed the area near the Wawa. That's taken care of?
Yes.
You took that area?
What we were talking about before in this general area was really temporary. During construction, during construction, there's going to be just as many complications as any site we've worked on. We're trying to keep the upper part of the parking lot open so we can have at least 60, 70 spots up there, even during construction. So on day one, we'll have some spots that are available up here so that the fields and the scadium can maintain at least with what they have now during construction of the building down here, which will really take up about a year's worth of time. During that time, we proposed stoning this area that would provide some temporary parking. We could look at that for long-term parking, but we did not feel at this point that it was prudent to put permanent parking along the drive because it's an entry drive. People are coming in hot and heavy up at Darby, and somebody backs out. So it's not our first choice to put spots there, and we feel that we're getting an adequate amount of parking spaces on the site without having to do some things that we would, you know, between us and the civil engineer, have some concerns about with added parking. So this would be temporary. This plan here shows what we would consider the final design, or what we're proposing at this point for final design. What this shows is 145 spaces just in this part of the parking lot alone. Just to give you an idea, right now, the entire site has 159. So the entire property here, we're getting almost that just in this spot. On top of that, we're looking at adding some, an additional parking lot, kind of at a mid-level here, as well as private parking down here. What this has shown, this is the building here in blue, and then this would be a gated area there for secured parking. That's the marked police vehicles. That's personal vehicles. And that meant the police officer's desire to have, again, secured parking area, certainly, again, much, much larger and more...
So you're adding about 98 spots, roughly?
Yeah, I think that's, we're up to that area. There was a desire for, previous studies had shown we needed at least 244 spots on the site, and we're exceeding that now. Where the final number lands will be more than 244, but we're exceeding what would be needed by the previous study.
Have you considered parking on the other side of the building?
The other side of the stadium. We looked at that. We're, on the opposite side of the stadium, I believe, again, previous reports had said it's too close to the property line. We can't get a road that would come out and around that to hook back up to Darby. So you'd basically be going back there to kind of like a hidden, dark area and then come back. It was too close to property lines. So that had been looked at. And again, it's another spot where, sure, you can add some spots, but we may not recommend it on day one. I know we're going to talk a little bit about some, maybe some storage sheds and things that are along the side of the scadium now, that maybe if they're relocated, we can find a couple more spots along that side. So...
Let me ask you a question. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, we're looking at parking. So with the addition of the municipal building, police station, you feel that with the recreation there, the scadium, the ball field, and our building, I'm sorry, there's going to be enough parking?
It's a vast improvement from what you have.
Yeah. It is an improvement. There are more spaces, but you're going to have more activity there as well. You have the field, you have the scadium, and now the building.
The activity and the business that's performed during the day should help in the sense that at 4:00, 5:00, when a lot of the parking that may be going on for employees at the building are leaving, that's when a lot of the after-school events are happening. So it's, you're dealing with that now, the ebb and flow of times. You know, weekends, it's going to be packed, but you don't have as many employees there. Nighttimes for hockey games and other events on the site, there should be a map, there should be people coming as the employees are leaving. So it should aid in that sense. Are you still going to have a lot of people when you have three softball games and a hockey game going on at the same time? Yeah. So your 90 spaces adequate more than what you have now. Another important attribute to look at is traffic on the site and just vehicle circulation. Right now, you can enter the site here from Darby, but when you exit, the public can only go right. Now, the police can go left through that island, but it's posted, hey, public, don't follow what the police are telling you. Manoa Road, the egress, or the entrance to the site is here, but because of its proximity to the Wawa and the light, you can't come out there. So that's a serious concern. So we said, all right, well, with the left turn lane that's coming in here should actually help the backup on Manoa, because that's going to take a good chunk of that backup and split in half. You're going to have two lanes. So that should help. If we take that entrance here and move it down, basically what we're showing now is, right where those stairs are now, would be a new entrance access onto the site for the public. That would allow them to come in, and we believe we can make at least a right-hand turn out of there, and we're studying to see if we can, or if we want to, have a left-hand turn come out of the site onto Manoa.
What's the grade on that?
It's steep.
Yeah.
This is a civil engineer's dream project. With the amount of topography and things that are changing in the site, it's another reason why the building placement where it is makes the most sense. The building, which I'll show you in a moment, is two floors. There's a lower level for police. The police are now only on one level, and the upper level is admin. So we've used the topography and the need to have a higher, higher, and a lower, lower in our advantage with a lot of the grading and things that are going on in the site. So yes, coming in off of there will be steep. You will drive not unsafe steep, certainly steep within code limits and all these other regulations that we need. But coming off here, you come in, go up a hill, or up an elevated drive to this upper parking lot.
And I can see, like, is one of the main concerns we were hearing from people, that I heard from people, was there'll be a baseball game going on, then the meeting's starting. And it appears like the people going to the meeting really should be coming in that bottom driveway and won't be up near the fields.
Right. If somebody's in a meeting, they could come in Manoa, they could park in this kind of mid-level parking, and there'll be a walkway to sidewalks, both here to the upper level, which is admin, that's the new commissioner's room and the office area on the upper level, or they could cross and go down this way, and that would bring you into the public entrance of the police. The other attribute to the site that we're really gaining is an emergency vehicle access onto Columbia. This is Columbia Road here, which is basically now an alley or a driveway up to the business beyond. And we can widen that and create an emergency vehicle entrance and exit for the police onto Manoa. And from here, they can absolutely go left or right. So that really helps their egress out of the site. It gets, hopefully, and again, emergency situations will prevail, but allows them to get out of the site and go left to right. They don't have to go through the site to get out. Obviously, if there's an emergency, they can. Police, you can do whatever you want.
I'll tell by all of that.
Exactly. But entering the site, you know, during shift changes, they come in Columbia, and they come in, they park, and they can go into the building. You know, if there's an emergency, they can still come out that way. So we've increased parking on the site. We've increased from two to three the amount of opportunities to come onto the site, albeit the third one being for emergency vehicles only. And we feel that we've improved the act, egress out of the site onto Manoa by allowing egress out of the site onto Manoa, which we don't have now.
For your emergency vehicles egress from Columbia, what's that line of sight coming down Manoa Road, coming, what, north, or... Yeah, you're coming to their right.
Right. When they get to this intersection, that's all graded back. Right now, when you come out, there is a bit of a site triangle issue because you've got to look around that elevation area. Like, this is going to change. It's going to look very different. That whole area comes down. There's a lot of cut and fill that we're doing on the site. You will be able to see, they will be able to see, coming out of there. Because again, it's safety and it's best practices, and it's going to be required by the traffic engineers, and certainly, Pinoni will be looking at that as well. So the traffic, the site triangle issue will certainly be addressed.
Are you replacing the stairs there, or no?
We will have public access this way. We're going to look to see if it needs, we're hoping to be able to grade it that you won't need stairs. It'll be a sidewalk, because we do want to enhance and, again, contribute, continue to contribute to the walkable community that you have. People are able to walk on sidewalks on Manoa and Darby. You can walk to the ballfields. We want to be able to have people, the ability to walk on Manoa, come up this way either by stair or by sidewalk. So we will address that as a pedestrian access on the site as well. So those are some of the advantages, I think, and certainly improvements that we've made since maybe some of the previous study that you've looked at. I can go to the police building if you guys, we can always go back and tell them.
I just have an idea. Here, where you're going to have, where you said the police could come in and out?
Yep.
Would it make sense to put a light here that if they have to come out, it would stop traffic?
We can look at that. I mean, again, we'll have to check.
A mercy light, it would only go on...
It would be just green, it would be green all the time unless...
But if there's an emergency and the police have to leave for the safety of everybody, because they might be turning here, make it go red, only when there's an emergency?
Yeah, emergency fire personnel have that coming out. You know, if you pass a fire station sometime. We can look at that. It is a public street. There is a business back there. But we'll take a look and kind of let you know if that's back in the... Because that may help certainly with some of the issues.
May.
You know, go further downs across Walgreens. Like, imagine, we don't have issues with them coming out now onto Darby?
Yeah, we're going to have more people there, though.
What's that?
You have the potential to have more pedestrians in that area and walking, too. As Jimmy said, he asked for steps are going to be there and all that. People, if they're going to have people walking, you know. I mean, it's worth looking at, just for safety.
Definitely.
So with the site, we've added some parking. We've created some additional egress and entrances onto the site. With the building, we had a clear goal when we started out was to try to get all of the police program onto one floor. So the building we're going to show you tonight is actually a two-story building, which allows for the entire police department to be on one floor. We felt that was the most efficient way for them to operate, the safest way for them to operate. And what we've developed was a floor plan that kind of starts from right to left as far as public to secure spaces. This would be the public entrance into an admin area, and I'll go through the plan in a moment. We have support. This area here is actually underground. Again, the second floor will be accurate up here, but this is actually dug in to the ground. So there's no access or even windows back there. So this is locker rooms and the workout room and storage and things like that that are pushed back a bit underground. So that's why the support is in the back of the space. The detective area wants to be up front, nearest to the admin area. Patrols, kind of as the buffer between secure and detective. This allows, this is all patrol's offices. This is the roll call room, evidence storage, the armory, special ops, groups like that that want to have a quicker, closer egress possibility out to all the secured parking that are out here. If they come in on shift change, they park their car, they go right in here. It's a little bit more efficient than walking around and going through the admin door. And then the secure area, which encompasses the Sallyport and the holding cells. So that's how we laid out, kind of from right to left, the organization of the police department. We've met with several members of the police department throughout this process, and so far, to date, everybody's, obviously, we still have tweaking to do like anything else, but this concept, this layout, and they're certainly appreciative of having the police facility all on one floor, has been met very positively. So again, here's, this is the entry. There's a lobby area here where you're secured for interface with administration, and then you can go through, if allowed, you can go through this door and into the various parts of the police department. The officers from the secure parking are coming in this door. They have their evidence storage here, patrol, detectives, and so forth down the line, as I showed in that kind of diagrammatical speed. This is an enlarged Sallyport with some police vehicles, one of the SWAT vehicles, as well as some evidence storage capabilities. You have booking and arraignment, and then holding cells behind. So all of this plan in very, very close detail has been worked out with the police and will continue to. But again, the big advantage is having it all on one floor. Upstairs, we have the entire admin space. This is, now you're upstairs, so we're coming from the parking lot. So if the public would come in here, they're in a secure lobby. This is the commissioner's room here. We have a reception desk and an area here to, you would essentially be buzzed in. This is a secure area to be buzzed into this admin suite. There's two transaction windows from this lobby, one to the rec department and one to finance for people to, you know, come and fill out a form or pay their taxes. There's the code administration, storage. We've got Public Works and EMS and all the office spaces that are needed to be in this space as well. And we've worked very closely with Lori and her team about how big every office is, how many conference rooms we have, and the floor plan of this. I have copies for everybody to take a look at when we're done. But this basically sits right on top of the police here. And then this area here is the part that's over the secure part of the police. We're showing an option here for maybe three storage rooms. We mentioned earlier about trying to grab some of those storage sheds that are along the scadium. Maybe they can go away for added parking. We could add this as an alternate. That was something that was considered, hey, we could document it. It could come in. We could see how much it would cost, and then it'd be up to you guys, maybe if you wanted to do that or not. But basically, this line here is over the entire police department, and it's just this area here that's over the secure part of the police department. You know, we could have some mechanical units perhaps that sit on top of that to act as a, you know, mechanical units. The conference room, is it? Okay. The commissioner's room can be split in half, so we could have various sized rooms. And then this was a concept of just the elevation from the public side. Again, we got handouts so we can give it.
Yeah, we'd like to have the handouts. Would you, if you'd like to hand them out? Hence the name "Handout."
It's going to be great.
Come on!
Let me, let me drag.
I'm going to just ask everybody to take a look at it, and maybe we can talk about it somewhere on Monday, but we're going to start, we're going to need to get some decisions from the board in order to proceed with some pricing. And we have to know that we're okay and we're going in the right direction for the concept before we can develop the price. And we have a construction manager. You know, you hired a construction manager. One quarter just waiting for some input as well as the architect.
One of the things I'd like to know about, I think it's something Laura Marine has that's really great. They have like a TV studio there where they can do like infomercials and that type of thing. I know, I was over there to do one on the R-100, and it was pretty good. I mean, I didn't look good in it, but it was, it was good.
One of the parts of the program is an IT office. That space will have the servers for the entire district. We've been talking to them about a social media office and scenarios for that.
It was actually like a TV studio type of thing, that they had like the green background and all?
But we don't have that capabilities included in this design at this point.
Is that something anybody would be interested in, or no? I think Laura Marine uses it a lot. I mean, I think it's actually something that's pretty good that they do. I don't know if Radner has it or not, I'm not sure, but...
I think that, I, if we, I just, my only concern is I think there's a lot of great things that we can do, but we've got to watch the budget.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, can we look at the possibility of that as something, you know?
Maybe take one of those storage rooms and convert it.
Yeah. Why don't we take, why don't we take this, look at it, everybody get their take on it, let it soak in, and then next week, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
And have everything written in here.
Do we know about what this is, money-wise or anything, or no? No, I can't. No. Do you want one? Unless you agree with my recommendation, you can't have it.
Then the numbers that we're, that we've been trying to achieve as far as building size and site work.
Within the budget that we...
Yes. We feel that with the building, the size it is, where it is, and the amount of site work that we're doing, that we're staying within what we've been asked to do. Now, obviously, like Lori had said, with approvals to keep going, okay, this concept works. Certainly, we're going to ask them to, but if it works, you know, that's where we can turn things over to the CM to get their first go-round of process.
I just wanted to point out to the board that this is not a final floor plan. This is really just to try and see whether or not, it's a modeling exercise to see whether or not that the program that the architect has now confirmed, how we can make it fit on the site. So it's just a direction to proceed. We already have, just in talking today, a few tweaks that we want to make with the architect that changes things around. So we just want to know generally if this is a concept that the board wants to continue to pursue. It's a two-story model. I think originally, when we did feasibility, we were looking at a three-story model, so we're down to two floors. And so if you want to take a look at the drawing, and your construction manager is here, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have a rear view of the building?
Not for tonight, but we'll give that to you very shortly. We were just trying to show a general idea and concept of materials and things. And again, we'll be coming back.
So you would like us to make a list? I just have a couple little things I can certainly put on here, and then we'll come back. What, we're doing this next Monday?
Yep.
Come back with what we have?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right.
You could probably put the library here now, couldn't we?
Thank you.
I don't know.
You know, that's funny. That's a good segue into our, into our next presentation. Thank you very much for coming.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Next is the library.
There we go.
Library? Update? Library update?
Thank you, sir.
Why is this on my...
Appreciate it.
There is no update, right?
Okay, no update from the library?
No.
Okay, why don't you come up and... There seems to be a little disconnect here. Okay, you're going to give us an update on the library?
Yes, I'd like to give you an update on the library. Thank you. Good evening. It has been a very challenging summer for the library, temperature-wise. The library has been without air conditioning since the first warm day in late spring. With the help of some temporary air conditioners, which helped take some of the humidity out of the air, we were able to open for the better part of the summer with some short days. When the temperature reached 95 degrees, we had to close. Unfortunately, we did not have to be closed for significant periods of time. But without air conditioning, the building got very warm and uncomfortable, not to mention unsafe for staff and our customers. It's a building that holds the heat and humidity for a long period of time. The new air chiller for the library was delivered on Friday, and installation has begun. It involves a great amount of work and will be completed on Friday. From the Board of Trustees of the library and me, I would like to publicly thank the staff for enduring the warm temperatures while serving the public to the best of our ability. I thank all of the library users this summer for their patience and understanding. And I thank the Board of Commissioners and Mr. Gentile for making this emergency I welcome you back to full hours beginning Thursday, August the 6th, when the temperature is lower, and the air conditioning with its brand-new 90-ton chiller will begin on Friday. I welcome you back to enjoy the rest of the summer at the Cool HTFL.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update on the library. Next, we'll have the YMCA up for an update also.
Thank you for having me. My name's Dave Mullen. I'm the executive director of the Haverford Area Y. And I'm just gonna talk to you a little bit about where we've come and where we are and our short history in Haverford Township. As you know, we opened about 21 months ago on October 1st with our pre-sales and members that we brought from the mainline Y in Ardmore. We had about 7,000 people when we opened our doors who are members. Since then, as you know, we've had a lot of success, and we've been around 24,000 individual members for the last couple of months, which is about 11,000 family units or individual units. Seventy-four percent of our total membership is family or single-parent families, so we feel there's a clear need in this area for services that we provide with free child watch and swim lessons and, and things of the like that families seem to need these days. And about 10,000 of our members, about 40% live in the 19083 zip code, so very dense population, and we feel very fortunate to be in this community. As you know, we've had some parking and, and traffic issues. In April of 2014, we did hire a parking management company that's there during our busy times, morning, evening, and weekends, that we still retain. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our members and people that come to our building for meetings that they feel a lot safer in the lot with their, walking with their kids, and they feel like the lot has been managed much more efficiently. As you are probably well aware, we're adding, we did acquire 801 and 805 Eagle Road, which Michael Troop has presented a plan to add a 30-spot parking lot on that site. We are gonna designate it for staff only, so it's gonna be a lot of our full-time staff, which we have about 45 full-time employees. So, staff are parking there for about eight hours at a clip. That's about 240 spots in the main lot that can turn over, so we helped, we think that's gonna help alleviate some of that problem. Also, well aware that there was a traffic study done, and so I went back and pulled comparative scan data from three months in 2014 versus three months in 2015, just to see how our volume has been. In January of 14, we had 65,000 scans. January's a busy time for all fitness facilities. A lot of people that we haven't seen in a while have come back, they're re-energized, we get a lot of new members in January. And so in January 15, we did go up to 79,000 scans, which is pretty typical for a facility like ours. But in May and June of 14 and 15, we stayed right around 60,000 to 62,000 scans in both months, year over year. So, our membership has gone up, that's well documented, but I wanted to show that our volume, the fitness business model is, we have members that pay that don't come a lot. You know, we wish they did, and we wish everybody lived a healthier lifestyle, but that's just not reality. So a lot of members keep their membership but don't always come through our front door. So our, our volume has stayed pretty consistent from 14 to 15. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we've tried to be a good neighbor in town. About when I ran this report last week, 58% or 230 of our staff, part and full-time, live in the 19083, so we are a pretty significant employer in town. We worked, before our building opened, we worked with the friends of Haverford Trails and helped mulch and ship out that trail down Pensie Trail. And we've also worked with the township to help give, put some of that land back in for the project to pave from the length of the trail. Our, but, Michael Troop before and still currently, and Buddy Bingham and our property director, work very closely with our neighbors for landscaping. When the fence is broken, we stay in pretty, pretty good communication with our surrounding neighbors and try to work with them and make them as happy as possible with us being a neighbor of theirs. We also, my, personally, I, I have a philosophy of trying to support local businesses, so whenever we can, if we have something we need, or we have a project that we try, we try to find somebody who's local to work with them. We've worked with Orner's, Nolan, UPS Store, among others, and try to make sure that we keep a good relationship with the other businesses in town. And we've also made several donations to local nonprofits and local charity events and local businesses that are trying to raise funds of their own. We've donated camp weeks, swim lessons, membership gift certificates. Last year, we helped other organizations with our donations raise about $25,000 at their auctions. This year to date, we've donated to 42 organizations, and they've been able to raise about $28,000 for their given cause. So, we try to, we understand we're a popular destination site, and we try to work with other smaller groups to help them raise funds for, for whatever their cause is. And then, I wanted to talk about some follow-up from the April 22nd meeting where Michael Troop and myself were here talking to constituents. Since that meeting, we did add another bike rack, which can accommodate eight to 10 more bikes, and we do have, throughout the summer, where we kinda tag-teamed off the library's idea of bike to the Y, we're trying to encourage people to come by, show us their helmet, and they get entered into a raffle for either some Y swag or a free membership to try and alleviate some of the automobile traffic. Michael and our property director have added plants and trees into the bioswell, which was a concern of the, our neighbors on Ralston. We also did trim down the bollards that the gentleman asked us to, to work with him on. We've adjusted the timing of the parking lot lights so that they come down after our hours of operation and they're not shining into the neighbor's house. And inside our building, our closing staff are turning the LED lights off at night so that, again, they're not peering into people's windows. And as you know, with the construction project, we're working with PennDOT to improve the traffic in the intersection of Lawrence and Eagle, and, and work on timing the lights and hopefully make traffic improvements there. That stuff's mainly above my pay grade, but I know you guys have been in a lot of those meetings with Mike and Jen. And the last thing I wanted to touch on is part of what makes us different from other fitness facilities, and that's our financial assistance program. I know, we've had some events recently where we've, we've invited our donors back into our Y. So every year, we go out into the community, we ask our, our families and our, our members and our friends to give donations to our financial assistance campaign, which is an annual thing, where one of our catchphrases at the Y is, "We never turn anybody away for inability to pay." So, husband, wife, you know, two adults in the household, somebody loses their job or somebody becomes ill. You walk into our Y and say, "My kids need to learn how to swim," or "I wanna put my kids in camp 'cause I work," and you can't afford it fully, we assist with that. That's, that's what makes us different and why we're tax-exempt and we're a charitable organization. That is a tough message sometimes for a facility like ours. Very big, very popular, a lot of people coming through the door, but last year, or in 2015 in our campaign, we, we were able to raise $137,000 in, in annual campaign. Every dollar of that goes back into the community based on need as, as it comes in our door. So if people need help with their membership, or they need with their kids and things, we assist with that up to a certain point. It's based on income, so nobody's on a free ride. Last year, in 2014, that total assistance equaled over $700,000. And year-to-date, we're almost at half a million dollars in charitable assistance to families in need. And we had a young lady come, we had a thank-you breakfast that Larry and Jim came to, which I was very happy to see them. And typical-looking woman who came up and spoke, and we asked her to come as a testimonial because she was a recipient. Pretty classic story. Husband, wife, had kids, they were, you know, appeared to be successful, they got divorced, she's now on her own, trying to find a way to, to get income, has the kids, and came to us, and we were able to help her get back on her feet by having her come to a facility with her kids, stay connected, she was able to work out and stay healthy. And she has said, said in the breakfast that she's back on her way up financially and that she will be a donor once she's able to sustain herself. We hear, we collect stories like that, we try to tell them as often as we can, and, and that is absolutely at the core of what we do and who we are, and that's what separates us from, from every other facility. So, I wanna thank you for the time, obviously open to questions. I'm excited to be here, and, and thank you for the invitation.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you.
Thanks.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I, I'd just like to thank you for taking care of Ralston Avenue, 'cause we did have issues with that. I was just telling Commissioner D'Amelio that we did have landscaping issues and cutting down the bollards was, you know, important to the neighbor, so I do appreciate that I was able to see that recently.
Happy to do it, yeah.
And could I just ask you, I'm a little confused about the scans. Is that over a two-month period? You're, were you comparing two months in a row, consecutive months, or were you?
No, I have the ability to go day by day. So I went June 1 to June 30, and May 1 to May 31.
Okay.
In 14, and then in 15.
Okay.
We check that pretty frequently. We check the time of day scans, and that's how we staff and figure out.
Do you scan children as well, or just adults?
Every.
Every individual?
Every person has a membership card, so yeah, we have the ability. If a mom walks in with three kids, we scan all four of them.
You scan all of them, okay. Thank you.
You know, I just have a comment or I guess on a question. I mean, when we were at the meeting in April, many constituents were concerned about the amount of members that you have.
Yep.
Now, when this was first proposed to this board, we were never told that it was going to be as many as it is now. Many of the residents have expressed concern about possibly capping the membership. Now, you're at 24,000, is that correct?
Yes. It's been about 24,000 over the last six months or so.
Okay, so if it goes to 30, you'll, you'll be fine with that? I mean, will be, will there be a time when you look at it? I mean, you mentioned these scans. How busy are you during peak hours, and what are your peak hours, the traffic-wise? There's so many issues. I think at some point, you have to say, "Wow, we're really, we're really busting at the seam." And I don't know how you can support that many people.
I can tell you that in an organization our size and the way it's set up, I don't have the ability to cap membership. That would, that would come from, from John, my CEO, and my COO. It's not something that we do in our organization, and primarily, it's because of the financial assistance aspect. We don't feel comfortable that we would cap membership and have, have all the need out there, and, and us have to turn people away. So, it, it feels like, I mean, Y's of our size, there is definitely a peak, and we've seen it, we've had several months where we've had more terminations than joins. So it's, it's gone down, and it's staying around 24,000. I wasn't at those presentations, I think the number I heard was 15,000 or 16,000, based on the consensus data that, that my organization did before I got here. I'm in charge of the operation, so I can tell you that my organization's pretty happy with me, with the way things are going. A decision like that would have to come from above me, and that's, I don't have a better chance.
Now, do you, do you feel there's the possibility of the new Y over by where Don Guinella was? That should alleviate some of.
That's not.
I know it's not you guys, but it would probably alleviate.
I would think, yeah.
You know, I would think a lot of people from that side of town might end up going over that way.
And if Community Y, which is Lansdowne Ridley, ever decide to, you know, do capital projects, it would, it would impact us as well.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'd be curious if this board has ever asked any other business in this town as to whether or not they have a capacity at which point they won't allow anyone else in their store. We've had this discussion numerous times. The equilibrium is going to eventually create the peak amount of people that can go to the YMCA, because the people who go to the YMCA will be sick of waiting on lines to go to the, you know, swim in the pool, or be in the lanes, or, or use the equipment. The idea of asking these people to cap what they do, especially after an extraordinarily eye-opening meeting that I had there two weeks ago, where I heard firsthand the stories of what the YMCA does for so many people that cannot afford a Bally's or another type of health place, and that YMCA truly does exploit and, and, and really brag about its role as a charitable organization, and not just as a place that, that provides gym services. I, I just think this is a, a point that, that's just being beaten like a dead horse, and it's not necessary. I will never support any pressure from this board to try to get these folks to cap their membership when they are an extraordinary nationwide, you know, national organization, and when simple market forces will stop this from bursting at the seams.
Okay. May I say, respond to that? No, we would never ask any other business, but none, no other business has grown like that in this township. Number two, we had this meeting here in this building with Mr. Siegel hosted, really, and Jane, I think you, you were hosting it too, they co-hosted. This is something that the residents, which was a pretty, one of the most attended meetings, am I right, Mr. Siegel? And it really came from, from them. It, it came from constituents who had that concern. I mean, personally, I had that concern, but you know what? If, if traffic is, is hurting the neighborhood, then you have to take a look at it. You can't ignore it. That's our job to say, "Whoa, what's, what's going on? Can you, is there anything you can do about it?" Traffic is horrendous there. I hear it all the time from my constituents.
Traffic and parking changed dramatically when the Oakmont opened, okay? Traffic and parking, and my ward and the sixth ward, and Carlino's is dealing with any kind of holiday, is extraordinary and is difficult for everybody. It's just not what we do. We don't look at and say to these people, "You've got a limit on the number of folks who can use your business or go into your business, 'cause it's causing too much disruption in our neighborhoods." I mean, look, we've, I, I do believe, and tell me if I got this wrong, that the number of swipes has evened out, even though membership has increased. Is that correct?
Certain months, yeah.
Well, that, that's, I mean, that, there's your proof that there is an equilibrium that, that the YMCA is going to reach in terms of how many people are actually going to go in, as opposed to how many join. But the fact that they have as many people as join gives them the opportunity to be able to offer the discount or even the free opportunities for folks who need it.
I mean, it's wonderful that you do that, there's no doubt about it, but we cannot ignore constituent concerns. You can't.
And nobody's ignoring the constituents' concerns, but sometimes we have to be, but sometimes we have to be straight with our constituents about what is within our purview and what isn't within our purview. And suggesting the YMCA, as opposed to anybody else in this town, has to now regulate how many people come into its place, I, I think is just really the wrong use of power on this board.
I don't agree with that.
Well, you don't have to.
All right, that's, that's enough. Let's move on to our next item. Thank you very much.
Wait, there's more questions.
I, yeah. He hosted the meeting. He should say so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna get into the issue of capping, but I think the biggest concern of residents, and we've heard a little, but is the, is the parking that goes beyond the YMCA.
Yes.
That crosses across to Hillcrest. I see it every day, driving to my office. And I don't know if you are doing anything to encourage your members to use the parking lot, but that still is the largest area of concern that I hear and, and that I see daily. You know, as I drive through, I can see, I see the people crossing at the light, and that's at all hours of the day. And I don't know what, if anything, is being done to address that, which does impact the neighborhood probably as much as the traffic.
We've, through our social media and our emails, we've sent out messages, we can resend it to reiterate, but to park in our lot, or we partnered with Nolan and Young's Producers to park there in off-hours. We've also told our park-offs company to never send people into the neighborhood. Other than that, I don't know how we can get them to stop. We've even had, you know, it's a lot less, but we've had patrons from the nail salon and go the other way. They park in our lot when it's quiet and going over. So, I mean, I'm open to suggestions for that. We've met with the, I think there's an accountant across the street.
Yeah.
In January, you know, two years in a row, we've talked to him, and we were never pushing people out into there, but I think sometimes people understand that what's going on in our lot and just like.
But it's also interesting that the far lot closest to the 7-Eleven tends to appear to be underutilized. It's as though people going to a health club don't wanna walk that far to get to the health club, but that's, that's what I see, because I drive that road.
I see that also.
Yeah.
People would rather forego going to businesses in the Oakmont Business District than park 100 yards away.
I agree. You see that too.
Yeah.
But it's, but that's not impacting the neighborhood the way this does. That's the distinction.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
I agree. You see that too.
Yeah.
But it's, but that's not impacting the neighborhood the way this does. That's the distinction.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot. Thank you for.
Thanks very much.
Okay, we're going to have the crime stats. Chief, I'm sorry, deputy chief. The chief is not here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. 282 traffic citations were issued, 170 parking tickets, and police officers issued 180 written warnings. Two burglaries in the month, a quicker lane daytime forced entry, it was occupied at the time, $20 on an iPad was taken, and the residence is only occupied intermittently. That's still under investigation. The second one was Moreland Avenue between July 26th and July 29th, no force. It appears a hidden key was used by juveniles to gain entry to have a pizza party. The suspects were known by the victims and they don't want to prosecute. We had five thefts for vehicles, all vehicles were unlocked. We had one armed fire car driver driving 7:13, 2015 vehicle from North Village, reports sold, air to fire was found. Two cars pushed up into the trail, whatever reported, the police got there, the fire department got there, was fully involved. Were two sex offenses reported for the month. Number one on July 8th, the investigation shows it was unfounded. The second one on 7/8th, and investigation is ongoing.
Okay.
Real quick question for the chief. Chief, Mr. Gentile told us that Pope's visit, we will not be affected by anything, so we just want to make sure that the residents know that if there are any concerns, there isn't an issue.
We have a meeting with the county officials. I have gone to numerous meetings. There's no direct impacts in Haverford Township, all the P&amp;W, everything else bypasses us and the surrounding townships, but we are meeting this week with our staff in case, because of the P&amp;W line, in case something should happen on that line with pack trains, so we can be prepared to remove people if necessary. So, we don't have anything directing us, impacting us directly, but we are prepared in case something should happen.
Great. Thank you. Okay, now we'll begin the discussion on Act 99 and UNOs. Commissioner Hall?
Mr. President, my favorite subject, back again, UNO. And what I'd like to ask the board of commissioners, if I could just speak to you for a few moments about our use and occupancy, I'd like to thank Lori for helping me the last several years. She's stepped out trying to work on this. I, over the last couple of weeks, have spoken with the Suburban Realtors Alliance and one of the representatives, they serve Bucks County, Chester County, Delaware County, Montgomery County and act as a liaison for realtors on legislative and regulatory issues. And so, I asked Kathy McQuidlin is the contact that I have there. And what we discovered is that Jamie Santora is actually very much leading the charge and on the committee for this.
It's actually his bill.
Yeah, he's the, he's the one that, I would like him to come and speak to us about Act 99 in September if we could. And for those of you, Commissioner Wexler pointed out last month, this is about lateral sewer lines from property owners to the main sewer line on the street.
Right, and we discussed that.
We did, we discussed that.
He will, Jamie will be here for the September 8th meeting and he will discuss, have it, he'll be prepared for discussion on Act 99.
Right, so what I wanted to say to the commissioners is that I think in terms of the use and occupancy, this has been an incredibly busy spring for realtors. And every single day, I either have a realtor tap my shoulder or call me and ask me to visit a property and have it for township. And as much as I'd like to do it for everybody, it's become a little bit crazy. So, what I would like everybody to see, if they can go to the website, when you have a chance between now and next week, if you have a couple of minutes, if not, I'll print it out for you, but our use and occupancy inspection requirements are pretty clear on the website. And it's actually very simple, but there are a couple of things that I think we can do better. The backwater valve, I constantly have people ask about that and when you read it in the use and occupancy, it says, any plumbing fixture located below street level and connected to the public sanitary sewer system must have a backwater valve installed. Well, what happens is it gets really complicated. People go in and they end up having to jackhammer their basement floor and they call me and say, you know, this is costing me $7,000 and I don't even understand what it is. So, I think that, I reached out to Mr. Pinoni today, but we were unable to connect. I think if we could touch on that and maybe do a better job of, A, explaining our use and occupancy and exactly what we expect to contractors. If that takes illustration in terms of curbing, which I'll get to next, or if we can be a little bit more defined on the backwater valve issue, because this has really come up a lot. What a lot of people in Haverford Town are doing is they're putting full basement bathrooms because most houses are 3-1-1, which is three bedrooms, one full bath, one half bath. They'll put a full bathroom in the basement and they don't do the proper sewer line, backwater valve. So, then when they go to sell the house, the inspector comes out and says they have to do it and they actually have to lift the cellar floor and it becomes a real issue. So, I think that if we could be a little more clear on that, and I don't know, Dave, if you can, if there's a good way to do that, but maybe you can talk about that in September when Jamie's here. And also, having discussions with the suburban, you know, Realtors Alliance, what we found is discussing the curbing and the laterals is that if you keep tagging this to the use and occupancy and the transfer, then what's happening is, and I've watched it closely for five years now, is that we've done a really finely, a good job with the curbing where there are a couple of contractors that actually get it and the curbing is now uniform when they replace it. Couple of contractors don't get it and they really should have to go back and replace it and make it right.
Yeah.
Because they're still doing the dental work on the curbing. And it's really aggravating. And if they need an illustration when they come in to get the permit, then let's give them an illustration on how it should be done so it's uniform. But if you go down one street, just one street in Haverford Township and you take a look, what you'll see is 10 new people have moved in on the left-hand side and the curbing's done and the program has worked and it's cohesive and it's lovely and it's gorgeous. But then you have one person that may not move for another 25 years and it drops down and goes, you know, we go back into the same thing. And so, what's happening, in my opinion, is as much as we have made great strides over the last few years and we're getting more cohesion and a good flow with the properties because we've had two great years of transfers in properties, what I think that we need to do is we need to not only have it at transfer property, but offer to the community some sort of plan. And I know I've said this over and over again, but I really believe it, some sort of plan that when the roads are paved, the curbing gets done. Yes, it's on the property owner. No, it's not on the township, but we go into them and we say, you know what, the road's going to be paved, the curbs have to be done, sidewalks have to be done, you're getting, here's six months' notice and we will try to work some sort of program, whether that's with, I don't know, grant money or some sort of contract that gives a better discount than the piecemeal that's going on now. And I just feel that if you look at the problem or you look at what we're trying to achieve and you say, you know, we would like, let's say, Hearst Terrace, we would like Hearst Terrace to have all-new curbing. So, what we're doing is making everybody that moves put it in, but it will never be right because if you then mill Hearst Terrace to pave it and the people that put it in are now down to three and a half inches and then a new person comes in and it's back up to six, it's just never, it'll never be, in a lifetime, it'll never be right. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. It does make sense and.
That's what I'm looking at, you know what I'm saying?
The, I thought the whole point we were trying to do was that it was supposed to, the latest thing was it was supposed to, like you said, be consistent with the neighboring properties.
Right, and that's working.
So, if they had to bring the curb up, well, no, it's not. I had one the other day where the people were actually told by the buyer who was there that everything on the street was four-inch and he was told, he said, I spoke to the commissioner about it and it should be four-inch and should be even with the other.
Right.
The other curbs. And he was actually, actually said to the guy, F the commissioner. I was told to put in six. That's how he worded it.
That's what the contractor said.
Instead of going back and calling maybe the codes department or something. So, now, it's the only six-inch curb in all Cooper Town is a 208 Rodney Circle. And it looks stupid.
And we've just had these problems where.
It looks stupid.
And the contractors will do it incorrectly and then they say, I'm not doing it. I'm not going back and fixing it.
But remind me, we don't have a, you install a new curb, it has to be six inches. No.
It has to be four inches if it's.
Four level with the neighboring properties.
If it's four with the connecting properties. If you have two properties and there are four, because that's the minimum height.
Right.
And then you replace, you know, the one in between and they connect, then you're trying to make it all cohesive, so it's the, so it all looks the same.
So, we have two and four and 208.
Here's Joey.
The way the ordinance reads right now is if you do the whole front edge of the house.
It's six.
It's six. If you repair it center to center and not the whole front edge, you match it at four.
You match it on either side.
Okay, so if someone's doing the whole front of your house, yeah, it's going to be six, the neighbor might be four next door, that's the problem.
And then you flow it down to, you're supposed to, right, which I've seen that.
It's got to be changed then, again, to make sure that it's the neighboring properties.
It's ridiculous.
Right.
It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, but our goal is ultimately to have six-inch curb.
Our goal is, but if we're going to do it, we should just do it when we're paving the roads because it's really just not.
I have no problem.
Mr. McGarrett, if you have something to say while I'm speaking, I'd love to hear it. You've been chatting the entire time that I've been speaking, so if you have something to say, just say it.
I was talking to Mr. Wexler. I wasn't talking to you.
Yeah, well, you know what? It's actually very rude to be talking to Mr. Wexler while I'm speaking.
I wasn't shouting. I mean, Mr. Wexler could hardly hear what I was saying, so I don't know. You worded so well.
Excuse me?
All right, let's move on. Let's discuss.
I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes, what were you saying?
That our goal is to have six-inch curbs.
Yes.
And if we were to do a street, we have six-inch curbs. Now, if you take advantage of the four-inch thing, any buyer does, they understand that they're not going to have nearly as much life of the four-inch curb as they're going to have in a six-inch curb, which may survive the next sale of the house. So, all of these problems are a consequence of the township not owning the curbs. And that's been a problem for my whole lifetime here. So, but it will significantly increase the cost of all of our roads and then that's spread out over the entire township. And frankly, that's probably not unfair for it to be spread out among the entire township because some streets have curbs, some streets don't have curbs, but they create safety issues and flooding issues and storm water management issues that are good for all of us. So, once again, the moment someone puts up for a vote here that the township takes over curbs, I will be its sponsor, I will second it, I will vote for it. It's a thing that ought to be done on a grand scale and it's just hurting our residents who have to do this and who get inconsistent things from different folks. And there's competing interests here of staying at four because everything is four around it or going to six because six is safer and six lasts longer. We should, this is a debate we've been having for your entire time on this board and I've been having it for six years before that.
Etiquetically, it looks stupid that it's the only house in all Cooper Town with six inches.
Well, of course it does, but it is the proper curbing and it's what anyone should be installing. So, the bottom line is the township should just start a humongous curb program here to match its road program and get them all done once correctly and find the people that are good at it.
I agree.
I agree. I really feel like it's time.
And cost is no different. We will definitely get better.
I agree with that.
We will get better costs and better economics.
Absolutely. Millions and millions of that's going to cost.
We'll get much better economies of scale, having it done on a grand scale and then distributed out to all the residents instead of having residents do it one at a time.
Yeah.
It is not 10 times as expensive to do 1,000 feet of curb as it is to do 10 100-foot sections.
It's just, it's ridiculous. It's the.
That's going to cost, isn't it?
Yeah, we can.
We've actually looked at that before.
I think we should at least investigate it, Mr. Gentile, if we can and get real numbers so we can make a real decision because what I'm getting is phone calls from people saying, I'm leaving my house, you know, I've got a backwater valve that's costing me $8,000. I've got curbing that's costing me $8,000. And listen, I get it and I've said over and over, I can't go on every listing appointment and say to people, this is what you have to do. And a week before, had an agent call me last week, she was settling in five days, they've got to do this backwater valve. What are you going to do about it? I can't do anything about it. She should have known and told her client. But it's one of those things that it happens and what's hard is then you have, you know, TE that they don't even have a use and occupancy. You know, they don't have anything. So, it varies from township to township and I just feel like this has been a pet peeve of mine since I took office and I really feel like if we get real numbers about what it would cost when we pave the roads or doing it on a, you know, ward-by-ward basis, you know, rotating however we could do it, but I feel it's something that we really need to address. It's just, it's just a bad program.
Okay, why don't we let Larry get some numbers together, then we'll have another discussion on this, all right?
Yes, and Mr. Pinoni, can you, will you address the backwater valve in September? Thank you.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
The telecommunications discussion, we're going to forego that until November. Then Larry, you wanted to discuss revisiting the live entertainment?
Yeah, one issue. I got a call from a constituent and this constituent was really spot-on.
No, as a commissioner.
Up until, I think, August 1st, if you had a block party and you wanted to have a DJ at the block party, it was a $10 fee that you paid the township, a $10 fee you pay for the block party, a $10 fee that you paid for a DJ or for live music, and then there may or may not have been a separate fee associated with the police officers coming and dealing with certain things at the block party. It's now $70 to have a block party with a DJ. We upped two of the fees from $10 to $35 each. I understand the block party permit went from $10 to $35. What it really did was went from 10, what it really did was go from 20 to, or from 30 to 35 because it was a $10 block party permit and a separate fee charged by the police department, which may or may not have been uniformly enforced. And then there was a $10 fee for live music. The live music fee has gone up to $35 and I'm just having trouble articulating, and I've asked the township to do this for me and they can't, as to why we needed to increase the price of live music or DJ, amplified music, other than simply to discourage it.
Is this at a block party you're talking about?
This will be at a block party. Yeah.
I agree with you. I think that we.
Yeah, and, but I do understand going from $30 to $35, the police, we have to, township has to send people out to block the roads, the police have to administer this, they have to give out a certain amount of notice and that in reality, the block permit went from two charges of $10 to the township and $20 to the police department to just a $35 flat fee, $5 increase. That's not going to discourage anybody from having a block party. But I'd like us to revisit this fee services next week and scale back the live music permit to the $10 it originally was.
Okay with that.
Instead of 35 because it's now, for a little block, it's turned into a $70.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I'd like to hear why we, yeah, why we did it if it's possible.
Heavy G for us.
Okay.
I mean, you have to be fair to, I guess, the staff and find out why.
After this was enacted, Lieutenant Hagge and myself were reviewing it even before you brought it to our attention. And it was my feeling also that somebody was having a block party, having music of jukebox or whatever, I thought it was too high also. So, we have since adjusted it.
Oh.
So, if you come in now for a block party permit, you're going to pay $35. If you have live music with it or any kind of music, it's an additional $10.
Oh, great.
That's fine.
But if you just come in for a music permit, it's going to be $35. And we had to keep it uniform because obviously with what we have going on, that's a sliding scale. So, in this new application, which, multiple pages, so if you're having a small party, you don't have to fill out the block in the front, but if somebody's having a large event like what we have going on with the music fest, there's multiple questions that have have to be filled out. So, we have since adjusted it and reeled it back in, because we thought it was too high also.
But it'll still be a $35 fee if I'm just amplifying music in my own yard?
I'm going to talk to Lori about that. We feel that should also be a $10 fee also.
I agree.
So, we're, the problem is, you know, people don't always tell the truth when they come to the window. So...
Oh, no, I get that.
We're looking for, for a permit application. So, we're, you know, we realize people who have parties in their backyards, they shouldn't be paying a lot. But if it's a small party, $10 fees is adequate. But it's not always the truth what we get. So, we're trying to make it uniform.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
So, so our office staff doesn't understand or question somebody.
Right. Yeah. All I, yeah. And, and you have fees like this for two reasons. One is to cover the cost, and two is to discourage. You know what I mean? There are things that you can do, but you make it expensive so that somebody really has to want to do this thing. I mean, that's what taxes and governmental fees are all about. I just couldn't articulate what it was about live or amplified music that created expense, other than we just wanted to know that it was happening. And if the police got a call that somebody's blaring music at 2109 Chestnut Avenue, you'd say, "Will they have a permit? The permit expires at 9:00. Certainly call us at 9:01 if there's a problem." And I get there's, there's administrative costs associated with that. But up until now, I thought $10 pretty much covered that. So, I mean, I got a call from an organization that doesn't have any money at all and puts together an annual block party, and they're like, "It went from 20 to 70." And for them, that mattered.
And I think when, when we posted that new fee schedule, it was on our end, and we adjusted very quickly right after that.
Oh, great. I appreciate that.
We felt...
I mean, certainly, as soon as I brought it to your attention, we, we talked in-depth about it, and I appreciate both of you, Lori and John, getting everything you did. So, but if, if we don't need to take action, I mean, if that's something that can be done at the township and police level...
We're going to give you a revision to the resolution.
Great.
And, you know, the police were saying, oh, we're ahead of you.
Terrific. Okay.
We already adjusted it ourselves, so.
John, what time does the music have to go off? 11, right?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
If we, if we get multiple complaints, we tell the people, we give them, if we get calls, we tell them that we still get complaints. They have to shut down. Most people, they, we have to lower the music. And we normally do not have problems with a music permit issue.
Sure. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so now, Jeff, would you like to discuss opposition?
Yes, I would like to. I would love to discuss opposition to House Bill 809.
Team's enthusiastic.
A House state rep in, from Westchester, has proposed making students a protected class for student housing. And this would wreak havoc on my whole ward. And I would like you guys to seriously consider a resolution to the House that we do not support it. Jamie said he would deliver it for us. I know Greg Vitale's office said he is against it. And I would like us to still send the resolution anyway, because I just think we have a good statute that's working now. This bill would override local, local municipalities' ability to limit student housing in any way.
Commissioner Heilman?
Yes.
Anywhere, do they, does, does anybody explain the motivation behind this?
Yeah, it's Westchester University putting a lot of pressure on the rep, and so she's trying to get it done. Supposedly, not many people signing on as to support. I think she has eight co-sponsors, but 8's too many for me. So, I want to make sure we, we send something up. Radnor and Laura Marion have both passed resolutions.
Don't we have like 203 in the, in the House?
We do. We do. But I still want it known that we're against it.
No, I'm, I'm...
You know.
Makes perfect sense to me. I mean, I don't...
You're going to...
I am going to ask if, township manager, if we can talk to Kelly and Jim and come up with some kind of resolution for us by Monday night. I've given them the resolution from Radnor and the resolution from Laura Marion. My understanding is there's resolutions being passed all over the state, so.
I, I would ask Commissioner Heilman, in looking at those two resolutions you put before us, I, I think we could take a position that's just as strongly opposed to this without being, but perhaps be a little more sterile than some of the language that was used in this. I really don't think we need to pass resolutions about public urination, blaring music, or anything like that, and just indicate that we've done a very good job of policing this ourselves. We're the best people equipped to do it. We're the people who have the police on the ground to handle these things.
I don't necessarily have a problem with that at all, to be honest with you.
Yeah. So, I just, I'd like to see us do one with a, touch more sterility than these two.
Well, I think, you know, I, I attended Villanova University, actually graduated from Villanova University, and spent a lot of time, and actually did see all those wonderful things take place. So, I understand why Laura Marion, Board of Commissioners, put that in writing. So, they, they have Bryn Mawr, Harkam, Villanova, part of Haverford. They have so many schools over there, and, you know, it's just, I, I think they were just trying to be very...
I've just seen a lot of people over the age of 22 doing all these things as well.
Right, right.
And that's why I think we can just stick to the notion of being a, a temporary resident who's just in a place for four years.
Right. Right.
Got it. Okay, that's, we'll put that together for next, next week. So, Jim, you want to discuss anything else?
Well, I wanted to...
Classy, San Diego. What do you say?
I wanted to thank Lori and Larry Gentile for making the robo-call, because it's basically a fix from Township Line to Ellis Road, centered along the Pennsylvania Railroad, the old right-of-way, you know, the old railroad tracks. So, I want to thank Larry for that, making that call, Larry, to the residents in that area, and now they'll understand what's going on, and it'll, it's self-explanatory, as Larry said, and gives them a number to call if they have to call it, so.
Yeah. This is the mosquito spraying that they're doing, because we found some West Nile virus in, in and around.
It traps. And the other thing, on 809, I totally agree with you, Jeff. I'm with you on that.
Okay.
Mr. President, one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Did you guys discuss, what's this rodent control?
That's the, they changed it where it said rats to rodents. The rats were very offended. They, they...
What are we doing with that, by the way?
Actually brought a class action lawsuit.
Evidently, House Bill 80...
The king of the rats.
The rat king.
Rats.
No, the only reason I was asking is because, as you know, in, like, I think it was around Annabelle and those areas there, we had some problems with rodents.
We have sporadic. Every once in a while, we do have a rodent issue, and we, we try to address it as quick as we can. A lot of times, when you see, the way it's explained to me, if there's obviously roadwork, a lot of construction, that'll displace the rodents.
Well, one good point that you've made, Larry, is if you have bird feeders...
Yes.
That tends to bring them in.
Any fruit trees, things like that, is what attracts the, all that aqua love to...
Fruit trees? Restaurants, dumpsters.
Droop fruit.
Trash cans.
Droop fruit, huh? Droop fruit. Our health inspector, Nancy, gets out on the road relatively quickly to address those issues, and usually within a few days.
I know. They've done a great job.
I tell you what, they are fast to respond, and, and some of the residents did take our suggestions about the bird feeders, and it has actually helped.
It has. Over in Westwood Park, they've done a pretty good job.
It's a shame, but I mean, you know, you live in the...
Controlling that.
An area where that can happen.
Anything else?
Mario, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, last month, Jane Hall brought up the fact of, she felt that we should have term limits. And I just want you to know, I totally agree with Jane Hall, and I'm the longest standing member on here, and I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrett.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that what you were saying to Wexler?
All right.
I want to find out what she was saying in the familiar.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
There we go.
I don't know.
T-bone to make the Eagles, I say, huh?
I see you again.
Huh?
I know.
Out to me.
One, one, so, thank you.